This trustee meeting is in session. I just called you to order this with the clerk calling roll please.
President Richardson, trustee Burke, trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
I know we have quorum. Stand for the pleasure, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, free of duty and justice for all.
I see the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the 7th October current intended for me. Do any of the trustees have any comments on the minutes? Seeing that there are no comments, can I have a motion to approve of that?
So.
Second, a motion by trustee Schaller, seconded by trustee Thompson. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The approval of minutes have been approved. I've got a couple remarks, as we all know, that Barnes stop was a washout of this particular year, but I think our new administrator did a good job making a very brave weather decision. And when she called me, I said, Deputy, say why decisions into this court at the time. And I'd been out there earlier in the day, so it was a good call. And I think it was also a good idea the following week to have the little smores fling that we were able to get in there. We had like thirty people all together.
Yeah, I was gonna say about, I don't know, maybe something about fifty.
Well, anyway, that was a good idea. I'm gonna go out of order a little bit tonight. Sergeant Amber was here from the sheriff's office, and he indicated that there are a little stress on personnel within the sheriff's department tonight. Sergeant Amber, come forward if you would, and if you've got anything to let us know about.
I'm filling in for Lieutenant Thompson tonight. He didn't give me any information of the requirements to pass along. However, there's nothing I've realized either, nor passed along information over the last few weeks that would be important to the board. No major calls, no major incidents.
Just deer, oh, the deer are running though, right? The deer are running.
Be careful. Yes, same time of year, the rut is on, so in the next couple of weeks, there are a lot of car versus deer accidents, so be careful.
Is there anything I can take back, or any questions I can answer for you all? From the trustees, any questions for Sergeant Amber?
I'll introduce real quick to you that this is Deputy Wysocki.
Welcome. Thanks, Deputy.
He's one of our newer deputies. He's the MDLV relief car, so when Robin is on her days off, he will be, he's assigned out here and he'll be working on the contract.
All right.
For the time being, at least until January, when we have a shift change.
All right, well, thanks for your comments. Go out there and be safe.
Let's kick around for a little bit.
Yeah, you need to take, you stay as long as you can until you get called out.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Just watch out for town lakes out there today, town lakes, they're getting trapped and everything.
But they're only on till eleven. I'm only on Kelsey and fifty-nine, so.
I like the way you finished.
We have a record of it. This is the first opportunity for the public to make comments, and I see there are no one of them in the public to make comments tonight. The next item, seven on the agenda, is consent agenda. There are three items in the consent agenda. The first is the appointment of a new director, an alternative director for SWALCO. As you know, the village is a member of SWALCO, and our agreement provides for the appointment of a director and an alternate director. This resolution appoints those administrators of director and trustee Jim Thompson as the alternate director to SWALCO. Both terms will expire on April 30th of next year or until the successor appointed. The recommended action is to, for the motion to pass resolution number 2017-R-24, as presented. The next is the appointment of a diligent administrator as IMRF authorized agent. The diligent administrator is typically the IMRF authorized agent for Lake Barrington. This position has temporarily been filled by the village treasurer, Miss Peggy.
If there's aye.
So we have to appoint. The motion, the recommended action is for the motion to pass resolution number 2017-R-25, appointing Karen Dalton as a village IMRF authorized agent. And the last is consideration of the resolution appointing Gee Walt Hamilton Associates as certified enforcement officer with watershed development ordinance and Christopher Art Burke Engineering as certified weapons specialist. For Lake County Watership Development Ordinance, all communities shall petition for recertification every five years. Village was notified by Lake County SMC that the petition for recertification must be returned to SMC by December 5th, 2017. The recommended action is motion to adopt resolution number 2017-R26, a resolution authorizing petition to the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission under the Lake County Watership Development Ordinance and under the Lake Barrington Watership Development Ordinance for community recertification. Are there any comments from the trustees of any of these resolutions? No comments, can we have the consent vote, all in favor?
We'll do a motion in a second. We'll do it, yes. So, resolution approving the consent agenda as in the next, as the agenda.
All right, motion by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Schaller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That should be a good one.
Okay. Would be, the clerk calling roll.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes. The consent passes. Could we now have the treasurer report from, Ms. Peggy?
Before you, you have the financial statements for the five months ended September 30, 2017. So we are five months through our fiscal year. We'll start with the flash report on page two. This, we have total assets of $1,200,400,000. Liabilities and equity at $1,200,000. Current liabilities are at $833,000 and our equity is $1,568,000. Total revenues for the five months ended September 30, 2017 are $1,341,000. Total expenses are $1,22,000 for a net income of $318,000. We'll hold a little hold of line there, we pull out our extraordinary expenditures, and just as a reminder, each month we fill these, what we'll call, we pull up the extraordinary items, over. What's not included in there would be small items such as sign replacement repairs, maintenance under $1,000, or $8,000 cuber road maintenance, a monthly payment to Cuba, it's not in the extraordinary expenditures either. This month, there actually were no extraordinary expenditures, so the $9,835 that's pulled out, that was, that's year-to-date, that compares as month in that amount, and so when you pull that out of regular operations, excluding extraordinary expenditures, is $312,000,000 compared to last year, at this time of $436,000. So a couple differences between this year and last year, I think I've talked about, last month we brought this up as well, our consultant fees are a little bit higher than last year at this point, legal and engineering are higher at this point than last year. Our other consultant fees, those are done for the year, so those should end up pretty much close to budget, we're actually not too concerned about that going forward. So if the four, page 11 and 12, we'll get our actual budget for the year, five months year-to-date. You'll see on page 11, about three-quarters of the way down to our revenue, we're 53% actual to budget, running a little bit ahead of what we would consider, you know, five months, which is 42%. At this point, we collected pretty much all of our real estate taxes, that does pull our average up. We're trending a little low on income tax, and the state, you know, once again, has revised our estimates from when we did our budgeting back in January, February, so we're probably gonna come in below budget on that number, hopefully around $450,000 versus our $480, but at this point, it's hard to tell.
So there's a $30,000 difference?
Yeah.
Still about two months behind, or is this, this isn't a judge?
Well, no, 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 we're still about two months behind in payments, but we're getting paid each month, so there is talk this year they're gonna try to catch up, so we'll get an extra payment, they're trying to make us feel better because they're accelerating payment, but it's really just a timing difference, you know, it comes down to it.
Same one.
Same one, yeah. So we go to page 12, our total expenditures, actual to budget, we're at 41%, so we're pretty much trending, you know, overall, actual to budget is pretty close to our five months, what we would be expecting, let's try and see, there are, once again, the higher ones, engineering consulting, legal, those are trending a little bit higher, but we'll keep an eye on those, and engineering fees is high, but we also have corresponding higher permanent revenue as a result, so it does offset itself a little bit. Any questions in the general pan, or move on? Okay, we'll turn to the water sewer fund, that's on page 17. So we have net current assets of $1,331,000, that's taken our current assets as our current liabilities. There's really nothing to note, mention in this one, I know there was an RFP going out shortly for, is that the, well, the rust, the rust. The rust being mobile in the, in the tanks. The tanks, yeah, but, and that's part of, we had, that was in our operating budget to begin with, we had capital budget, we had, that was forecasted, so when that comes in, we'll see where we're at, but, we're already ahead of where we are for capital projects because that water tower bidding bid came in much lower than expected, so we have plenty of capital in there for doing maintenance work.
The one bit of budgeting good news for the year.
Yeah, that was huge, absolutely.
Thank you, Pastor Regro.
Yeah. Page 21, open space fund, we'll sweep $144,000 in our operating, in our operating fund there, the open fund, $340,000 in that account that's called open space bonds, that's just being collected to pay off the bonds, it'll be a payment that's due in October on the bonds. Any questions on the open space or financial test thing? I did have just a few comments on some of the items on the warrants, you'll notice there is a large request, $30,000, $262,000 for Illinois Municipal League for Social Management Association, that's our annual liability insurance policy payments that are due. We have a general liability policy in aggregate of $16 million, $1 million per occurrence, and that premium is about $14,000, $1 million for auto, $7 million for excess liability, that goes into reinsurance, we get that high, don't know if we see that happening. Workers' comp is $3 million per occurrence, that's about $2,300 per our premium, and there's property coverage, which is about $7,000 towards the premium. The public official bond, that's $9,000, each of the officials, village staff is $1,500 for their bond. And I think that's the whole amount, yeah, that's about that, yeah, it's only up 1.4% from last year. One other note to mention. Yeah, Marty, there's one last payment for our bill balling, I'll see the payment for $18,933, that's his final billing, just wanted to note that. Are there any questions on the warrant, warrant A? This month, we do have warrant C, which I'll make a note just because it's different. In accordance with our new travel meals lodging reimbursement policy that was passed in June, we have some special approvals needed for any employee travel and expenditures, or especially overnight travel, Lisa did attend the clerks conference in October, and so warrant C is all these expenses related to reimbursement for our clerks conference. The personnel manual uses the GSA guidelines for the amounts that we can charge in the hotel room, or the GSA rates was, in Springfield releases, a conference was only allowing $91, per hotel was $105, so we have to roll call vote to approve the expenditure over the GSA rates because it's higher than our policy allows. Kevin did pre-approve that ahead of time, but we do need that roll call vote, so that's why separately noted on the warrant C. I don't anticipate a lot of warrant Cs because there's very little travel being done by the staff, but it's just, it's part of our policy. Any questions on either of the warrants, warrant A or C actually?
Were you gonna talk about the tax levy?
Of course.
That's good, thank you. Where is that in the, sorry, is that what the first thing I was supposed to do?
See, the, no.
I didn't even look at the agenda, I apologize. Yes, the tax levy is here.
So, page.
So the resolution, and there's a typo there, it should say 2017, not 2016, so resolution dash, 2017, R dash, what would be the other seven?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. That's a resolution for the estimate of the amount of the tax levy compliance requirements of the Truth in Taxation Act. Do I go through the levy then, or am I sure how, what the roll call is for this?
Well, I guess it's the board's pleasure, the levy is, well, you can explain her that.
Okay. We've asked you to levy on this for the fourth year in a row, that we are levying $48,800, and you'll see on the levy, we've applied it towards, this year towards police services, so we're specifically levying residents for police services in a total amount of $48,800.
Yeah, it keeps it clean and, and our budget a little bit more straightforward, I think, if you excited some.
Just go to that column and go, where's the levy?
Right. So this, this is the resolution, and this allows us to cast the ordinance next month?
Correct, and the Truth in Taxation Act requires the village to make an estimate of this levy at least 20 days prior to the passage of the tax levy ordinance.
Any questions, comments from the board? Okay, we have five actions as a result of treasurer's report. A, pass resolution number 2016-R-27, a resolution for the estimate of the amount of tax levy in compliance with the requirements of the Truth in Taxation Act. B, approve the financial statements ends of 30 September, 2017. C, pay bills in the amount of $248,259.13, as listed on the accounts payable in warrant A dated 7 November, 2017. D, pay bills in the amount of $12,733.60, as listed on the accounts payable in warrant B dated November 7, 2017. And E, pay bills in the amount of $1,506.34 for travel meals and lodging reimbursement, as listed on the accounts payable in warrant C dated November 7, 2017. Would be, clerk calling roll.
Thank you.
So, I need a motion to approve A through E, moved by trustee Schaller, seconded by trustee Thompson. Now for the call.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye. I'm just trying to move things along.
That's appreciated.
Okay, thank you very much, Peggy. Appreciate your report and good work, and keep us, keep us informed in detail about our overspending true to the budget. All right, time for the administrative report, item number nine.
Sure, the first item I had to talk about was the Spring Creek Watership Partnership. I just wanted to let everybody know that the village will be hosting the next meeting of the Spring Creek Watership Partnership on November 14th at 10:00 in the morning. Some of the benefits by us being a member of this organization is, they have helped develop the plan, which is the basis for all the grants, the Watership Plan, which is the basis for grants for environmental projects, so we can benefit directly from that. Bay Cod also contributes services to the partnership, for example, their staff helps provide some of the readings in the creek for the watershed, so that's all really good stuff. Coming up Thursday is the next bank commission meeting, and on their agenda will be consideration of a revision to the sign ordinance. And other than, I just wanted to let everybody know, I took a nice tour today of both our water tower and the student plan with Fox River Grove, and all kind of, it's very nice to see everything. No, I don't like heights.
I was gonna be so impressed if you went on that ladder.
I don't do heights, no. I appreciate looking at that ladder and going, I should stay off.
You're aware the village manager has to inspect the inside.
Right, right, yeah, that's why they think those little airplanes are flying, drones, yeah, so that's all we're reporting.
Very good, thank you. Number 10, clerk's report, Lisa, do you want to talk about your municipal clerk's conference?
Sure, as you know, I attended the municipal clerks of Illinois conference last month, it was a week long, and it was filled with lots of information training, it was a busy week, and I'm networking with other clerks, which is very helpful, so I appreciate the opportunity to continue my education and become more knowledgeable and helpful clerk for the village of Lake Barrington, so thank you very much. Next year will be my final year, it's a three-year process to become registered and certified municipal clerk.
I just wanted to add one more thing to that, you met a person who's gonna come into our office next week for free, right? You might go home.
Oh, for records management, yes, so he is our local record management representative, I guess, and he's gonna be coming in next week to help us with records management and disposal, and what we, telling us what we can keep and, and give it up, which would be really nice.
So he's from the Secretary of State, our private division?
No, everyone has a different, he's from our area, I forget where he's from exactly, but he's just considered our local representative and comes out and announces with that, so I'll find out exactly. That was a direct result of you going to that conference, that we get this benefit of his expertise.
Well, that's great. Space.
Yeah, that's it.
I'd like to note it, while Lisa was down there, I got more emails from her during that week, she was in Springfield, I was getting ready for the block stop and all this stuff, and travel and all that, and so we kept it pretty busy, you know, we were busy on your cell phone. Time for reports of standing committees, as we know, President Richardson is on travel, so let's start with B, community relations special events, standing down in the affairs, trustee Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Conning-Tobbs-Cofield Fire Farm Memorial Placebo proposal will be completed soon for board input. That's about all I have for the village, however, for the veterans, this Saturday is Veterans Day, November 11th, and 11:00 AM at the Lodge of the Shores, the veterans of Lake Barrington Shores will be having a ceremony, and everyone in the village is invited, of course, we hope to see you there, especially those on the village board if possible, and the staff. Also, on December 9th, prior to that, which is this coming, excuse me, December 9th, December 9th, or Saturday, Congressman Peter Roscom will present to retired Lady Captain Daphne Matthews, the Congressional Accommodation Award. That will be at noon on December 9th, and everyone is invited to that as well. And also, for the veterans, Toys for Tots program again this year, November 13th through December 11th, to support the US Marine Corps Reserve. Last year, the drop-off box of the village was unused, so this year, the veterans are asking the village board and staff if they would like to contribute toys, and so I will pick them up Tuesday, December 12th, and take them back, and so thank you in advance for all your contributions.
Does those contribute wrapped in a loop?
No.
A hundred?
Yes. Just as a neat little sidebar on that, veterans, President Tom Gilherm's wife volunteers at the House of Hope, and they gave us, I think it's 150 of these big plush bears that we're gonna, which is just, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Trustee Burke is also on the travel, so we'll go down to external relations, and we'll go, we'll go right down to finance, human sources, and administration. The only comment I have is that on Thursday, Peggy, Karen Dalton, and myself will be with Joe Liberty to finalize the employee insurance program. That's a big program, and Peggy's worked at the Tricky Department, and thank you for doing all that, so we'll hope to have that under wraps on Thursday. Open spaces in village facilities, trustee Mitchell.
Nothing due to report this time, thank you.
You. Public safety and gentry committees, trustee Schaller.
I'm already here for the Lake County Sheriff's Department about looking out for four-legged deer out and about, and other activity minimal for this particular area, although the department has been busy with a lot of other activities, and again, be cautious people about locking their cars, keeping, keeping themselves safe and just being knowledgeable about what's going on.
I'll have one more pick to that.
Yeah, okay.
For those of you who want, can I ask? Sorry, I thought I stopped up. With the holidays approaching, I want to remind people, you know, if they have high school kids or whatever, they shouldn't be posting on Facebook, you know, they're gonna be going out of town for the holidays, on vacation or whatnot. The social media out there now, this is the newest way people know houses are empty and burglaries can start, so it all starts, you know, at the level of the house, where the parents need to control what their kids are, you know, it seems innocent to the kids or so, their friends know they're gonna get out of town, and they know it's a place they can party or whatnot like that. So a reminder, like you said, we've had some car burglaries in Long Grove and some stolen cars in Long Grove over the months, and it all comes down to people leaving their cars unlocked, or leaving their key fobs in the car. It's not like the old days, where they appreciate ignition, shatter the window to go in there, it's too much work and trust, too much attention, so, you know, leave your outside lights on, get a big screen TV for Christmas, don't put the box out by the end of the road for the garbage man all, you know, three or four days beforehand, or even two, because someone drives by and they know that TV's in the house. Little things like that will not last long.
Same way if you get a newspaper, have something to pick it up if you're driving.
Yeah, you know, you guys, you're all aware, if you're gonna go out of town, call the sheriff's office, we do extra patrols and house watches on the houses while you're gone, just let us know the gates you're gonna be gone, and the lights are gonna be left on in the house, and deputy actually comes and walks around the exterior of the home, make sure that they secure it locked, and give us a phone number to reach you in case there is a problem or question.
Okay.
Thank you. Very good, Countryside Fire Protection District, I wanted to thank the three representatives of the department who showed up promptly when we had our bonfire and heavy winds and the flames were up this high. They were gonna come anyway, but they came a little earlier because I had the thought that it might get a little out of control, especially with the hay bales piled up just to the right direction of where the wind was pointing, and those three individuals struck us at the very, very end, and poured 250 gallons of water on the fire, put it out the end, so we appreciate their participation, involvement, and oversight. And they've also observed Fire Prevention Month in October, a valuable opportunity to present important safety information to school age children, and reinforce the department's commitment to protecting the residents it serves. Captain Angela Rand George, firefighter paramedics Jeremy Brinkman and David Sebalka visited Countryside Elementary School, hosted a series of informative fire safety presentations for students, so it's Fire Prevention Month, and just be alert of the fact that obviously we've now closed up our house, we have fires inside the house, just be a little bit more cautious about what's going on with that. As far as the gated communities, the enclave, the As far as the gay communities, the enclave, the new board is interviewing property management companies. As far as they know, they've not yet selected one according to Andy Keeter. Lots ten, seventeen, and eighteen, all at frame just past this point. Fourteen is wrapping up. They have a winter snowplow contract that's now in place with Apex. Don't worry about that. As well, the enclave, getting a report from color grass, we did invite them to be part of the barn staff, but of course, that got washed away. So, anything small is, we get, we have a sales manager looking for other opportunities to help promote color grass in the area. As far as LBS, we had a successful holiday craft and gift show over the weekend, and which was open to the public. So, some of these events now, just like Veterans' Day, are open on LBS, but invite community and everyone to take part in that. Take a minute.
This is my wife in a car loan of non-residents.
Well, thank you for that report. There was a lottery here in, we, Carol and I got home, and I won the lottery, and I won a rolling cricket, like Kevin did. I came down here today, gave it to Eric, and so Eric gets money. Well, seriously, she carries a lot of stealth around, so she's got a black rolling cricket. All right. Roads and infrastructure, village administration.
Sure. Before I get to that, I think I was remiss earlier, I did not thank trustee Rippey for bringing in lunch for village staff today. Now, I did bring in lunch, but you brought in a door prize. It was, was greatly appreciated. Thank you again. Under roads and infrastructure, next month, I'll be bringing forth a proposal from the Walt Hamilton to update their payment condition analysis report. They lasted it in two thousand and eleven, and this proposal will update the payment analysis, which they do at the paper, and it's paper, a computer program, and site. It will give us a report to go forward with the capital, capital analysis of what our next five years should look like in the payment management. You may have heard, discussed previously within the term administrator, Bill Balling, and is just getting everything wrapped up with that. That's it.
Thank you very much. That wraps up the committee reports. Oh, there is no old business, so we have one ordinance, item number thirteen. Consideration of an ordinance admitting chapters five, design standards and requirement improvements in Title IX subdivision regulations of the Village Board and Village Code. New section nine dash five dash four, technical non-compliance by certain previously planted lots of record. Do you want to go ahead?
I, I do, yeah. During the course of, of the law of observing interim administrator, we had two separate occasions where lot owners in a previously planted subdivision, planted at the time the village required forty thousand square feet minimum lots, came in and, and brought to the village's attention that their lots were indeed not conforming. Must, it, it would appear to me, based on the data that's on the recorded planted subdivision for those lots, that the village certainly intended that those lots would be compliant at half forty thousand square feet. As it turned out, one was about seven thousand square feet less, and one was about two hundred square feet less than they should have been. One, the one that's two hundred, or rather, four hundred square feet, could have been a, just a, like a difference in how the lot was calculated by the county versus the engineers that originally designed and approved it. But, all that said, we have one particular resident who had applied for equity loan, home equity loan credit, and he, when the, the appraiser came out and determined that the lot was apparently not compliant and couldn't secure the financing he wanted. And, and that is, it might be tragic when this was a planted subdivision that the village proved intending that every lot was compliant and had engineers, both the village engineers and as well as the design engineer, intending that they were compliant. So, this provision of the, of adding to the subdivision would basically provide a corrective language, so to speak, recognizing lots that have gone through this process, but for some reason have turned out to be technically not compliant, that they would be recognized as, as conforming lots. And it gives, gives us a quick way to have language in the village code we can point to so that somebody can get the financing they wanted, for example.
So, that, that for them is a title problem?
It is, but now they'll be able to come into the village code and will be able to show.
We are compliant. You are technically compliant.
Yeah, we're technically compliant since our subdivision went through the appropriate planted process in the village. And moving forward, all would be required to be at the forty thousand? Oh, yes. It's still our standard, and I'm quite sure that the, 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 kind of, the quality controls of the village and the village engineer's office are much different now than they were at the time of this particular planted subdivision being recorded, which would have been during a different engineer's tenure. Do we have any idea if there are many more beyond these two? Uh, no, we don't. This, this happened to be two in one subdivision along Miller Road. Who knows how that happened? But there is, there is a suspicious jog in Miller Road that might have contributed to a surveyor or engineer's error. But, but we, I felt having encountered two of these so quickly that we needed a quick solution to, to help homeowners in that situation.
So, so that does not pertain to any new development?
It does not. It does not.
Any further discussion? The recommended action is a motion to amend ordinance number two zero one seven dash O dash two eight?
Twenty-one.
Oh, twenty-one. As presented, ordinance admitting village code in technical non-compliance by certain previously planted lots of record. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by, by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Thompson. Would the court call a roll?
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, there are no resolutions tonight. We have one item of new business. Consideration of a motion to approve snow plowing proposal from Doring Landscape Company for the Lake Barrington Business Park pedestrian walkway. Doring Landscape Company satisfactorily provided plumbing and salting as needed last year for the pedestrian walkway along Temple Road. They've held their prices the same as last year. The recommended action is a motion to authorize a village administrator entered into a services agreement with Doring Landscape Company for snow plowing services at a per plow rate of a hundred and seventy-five dollars and a per salting rate of a hundred and fifty dollars.
And just to add on to that, I did talk to Doring Landscape about that, and it would be typically when there's two inches of snow or greater is when they come out, like they did last year. Last year, they only came out twice, but because this contract has the potential to fee more than twenty-five hundred dollars, I need the motion to enter into that contract.
We just don't do anything.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Mitchell?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schaller. Do I need to call this?
Uh, yes, please. It's a standing motion.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes. The motion passes. We have a second opportunity for the public to address the village's wording, and there are no, there are none. There are no citizens to address the village's wording. We need to close the, we need to have a short, we need to have a short executive session. So, I need a motion to end this session, and we'll be convening a second session.
So, and so the motion would be to close the portion of this meeting effective immediately for the purposes of discussing, setting the price for the sale of real estate. Was, was there any other reasons that we could cover?
So, motion by trustee Schaller, seconded by trustee Mitchell?
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes. Thank you.